Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock on September seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. Time to call to order this meeting of the Gallatin City Council. We're going to begin this meeting like we do every meeting with the invocation, the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Alexander is going to offer our invocation. Then Vice Mayor Camp will lead us in the pledge. If you'll stand with me, please.
Let every heart pray. In the count of grace of God, once again, we come with thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you, dear Lord, for this beautiful day that has created. We thank you for this city and what it stands for. We pray, dear God, for all of our city leaders, all of our city officials. And we just pray that you would bless this meeting in a mighty way, that everything we say and do will be pleasing to your sight. In Jesus' name we do pray, in every heart set. Amen.
Ms. Kettrell is going to call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
President.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Mr. Phan.
Here.
Mr. Fennell.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Love.
Here.
And Mr. Overton.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, before you have the minutes from August twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, City Council meeting. We have a motion to approve by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander. Are there any corrections, changes? Ms. Love says they look good? With none? All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. They are approved unanimously. We now move to public recognition on the gender-related items. This is the time of the meeting where you can come forward and speak to any item that is on this evening's agenda. There's also a time at the end of the meeting where you can speak to items that are not on the agenda. But we welcome you forward at this time. You'll have five minutes to speak. Ask that you introduce yourself and give us your address. Public comment on gender-related items is now open. Come forward, please. Well, I see no one wishing to speak, so I'll say, "Public comment on gender-related items is closed." Moving us now into mayor's comments. And I will begin mayor's comments with two proclamations this evening. I'll start with the Recovery Court Month. And I will ask Judge Jim Hunter to join me at the podium, if you would, please. We are delighted to recognize Recovery Court of Sumner County tonight and recognize Recovery Court Month. Obviously, substance abuse is an issue not just in our community, but communities across our country. There are many organizations who are working hard to make a difference in substance abuse. And a big piece of that is making recovery an important part of that, removing the stigma associated with recovery and providing more resources for recovery. So we're particularly grateful for Recovery Court and the good things that they have done in our community. I'm going to read this proclamation and welcome Judge Hunter to make some comments. This says, "Whereas Recovery Courts are a key component of reforming our criminal justice system, and whereas currently there are more than three thousand recovery in specialized courts nationwide and seventy-six recovery courts across Tennessee covering juvenile, family, and adult drugs, veteran treatment, adult mental health, DUIs, and human trafficking; and whereas Recovery Courts have served more than one point four million individuals nationwide; and whereas since July one, two thousand and thirteen, there have been more than six thousand nine hundred and twenty individuals admitted into either adult drug recovery court or veteran treatment recovery court program in Tennessee; and since its first class in two thousand and oh-two, Sumner County Recovery Court has graduated two hundred and sixteen participants; and whereas Recovery Courts can significantly improve education, employment, housing, and financial stability, promote family reunification, reduce foster care placements, and decrease the number of babies born with neonatal abstinence syndrome; and whereas Recovery Courts facilitate community partnerships, bringing together public safety officials, courts, and public health and treatment professionals; and whereas through the observance of National Recovery Month, we will work to improve lives of those affected by mental and/or substance use disorders and acknowledge the influence of all organizations and individuals who work to break the chains of these disorders." Now, therefore, I, Paige Brown, Mayor of Gallatin, do hereby proclaim September two thousand and nineteen as Recovery Court Month and encourage all citizens to recognize this important time. Now, I'd introduce Judge Jim Hunter.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. My name is James Hunter. I am one of the Recovery Court Judges in Sumner County. Judge Gay are Criminal Court Judge in General Sessions Court where I preside. We have a joint Recovery Court Program from Criminal Court and General Sessions. We've done this now since about two thousand and one. It started a couple of years before I got there. Judge Jones, Judge Weakraft started the Recovery Court Program. And I started in two thousand and three. We had become certified. We were one of the very first Recovery Courts in the state to be certified. I think that occurred around two thousand and five. We've been certified every year. We get good reports when they do audits. So we have a really good thing going here in Sumner County with the recovery program. We have a 501(c)(3) we started that helps raise money. For this program, we survive off grants and fees that we take in. The county does not give us money for this. So we survive primarily off grants. We've started an intensive outpatient program. We have now here in Gallatin, which is a huge benefit for the community. You do not have to be in Recovery Court. You do not even have to have a criminal case. You can just walk in off the street, say, "I need help," and they can get you in the intensive outpatient program. It's a very good program. We have a certified specialist that teaches the classes there. They're regularly drug-tested to hold them accountable. So we have a lot of good things going on in the recovery community. Week ago Saturday, there was a big recovery fest at Triple Creek Park. That was sponsored by the Sumner County Anti-Drug Coalition, our Recovery Court Program, and Tennessee Helpline, which is a program the state started to help people in recovery also. So I appreciate the city recognizing this month as Recovery Month. The county did this last night at the county commission meeting. So we're getting the word out. We're getting information out. Everybody knows we have a terrible drug problem here, as they do everywhere in the country. It's just gotten worse, so we're trying to make a dent in it, and we appreciate your recognition. Thank you very much, Mayor. Counsel. Thank you.
Thank you. And the recovery fest that happened the weekend before last, I understand I was not here, but I understand it was a huge success, and they're looking forward to doing it again, so I'm excited about that. This time, I'd like to welcome the ladies from the DAR forward. And they are here so that we may recognize Constitution Week. I don't know if you've had the opportunity yet, but there's a beautiful display that they do every single year for us in the lobby of Gallatin City Hall. So for anyone that's interested in learning more about the Constitution, that's certainly a great opportunity, and we appreciate you doing it for all these years. This year, Ms. Helen said we ought to come and do the proclamation in front of the council and in front of the audience, in front of whoever may be watching online or on the television. So I'd ask you if you want to introduce everyone, and then I'll read this.
I want to thank you, Mayor Page. I am Helen Marshall. I am the chairman of Constitution Week in our DAR chapter, which is named General Jethro Sumner. And with me is Jane Wright, Nancy Gilly, and Dolores Burke.
Anything you want to say about the Constitution Week?
Oh, well, yes. Did you realize that tomorrow marks two hundred and thirty-two years since the signing of the Constitution? It was signed on September seventeenth, seventeen eighty-seven. And you all are sitting in this nice, air-conditioned room. Those delegates started arriving in Philadelphia in March. They were there from March until September, when the Constitution was signed, in a hot, very hot room in what we call Independence Hall in Philadelphia. The windows were boarded up. There was no air conditioning. There was no fans. They had to board up the windows to keep people from the outside looking in or listening to what was happening because they wanted to keep everything contained within their room and so that rumors wouldn't spread about what was being taking place inside the building. So this, just imagine if you were in this condition in seventeen eighty-seven, working to draw up the greatest document that has ever been written by humans. This document has lasted longer than any other document that governs people in the world. I would like to leave you with a comment from Senator Robert Byrd, who is a senator from West Virginia. He served in the Congress longer than any other member of Congress up until two thousand and thirteen, when a senator from Michigan outdid him, had served a little longer than Senator Byrd. Senator Byrd passed away, I believe, in two thousand and ten. But he was a very strong supporter of the Constitution. So I'd like to read just one little sentence or two from Senator Byrd's comments. He said, "Study the Constitution because it is both the foundation and the guardian of our liberties. Study it also with the knowledge that as strong and enduring as our Constitution has been, it is nevertheless a fragile, almost intangible thing that cannot survive without the dedication and support, constant support, of our citizens." So keep that in mind. Our Constitution just cannot be replaced. And think about how important this is to your, what you do on the city council. You serve in a public way, and a lot of that has to do with the Constitution. This month, we work very hard with the DAR in getting this message out to our community, not just here in Gallatin, but all over the United States. There are DAR chapters busy all month long, putting up, like we did downstairs in the lobby, putting up displays and getting the word out in any way that they can. Here in Sumner County, we have put up displays in seven libraries all across the county. We have put up displays in one chamber of commerce. Let me get my notes here. One Chamber of Commerce. We have set up another display in Hendersonville City Hall. We have put up a display in Sumner County Archives. So we are trying our best to get the message out that people need to read the Constitution, study it, and be grateful for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. I'm going to read this, and we'll take a picture. This says, "Whereas we, the people, did organize and establish a constitution for the United States of America to secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves and our posterity; and whereas it is important that all citizens fully understand the provisions, principles, and meaning of the Constitution so that they can support, preserve, and defend it against encroachment; and whereas September seventeenth through twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, marks the two-hundred-and-thirtieth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention; and whereas the President and Congress..." Do we have that wrong? It should be two-hundred-and-thirty-second? We need to correct that. Two-hundred-and-thirty-second. I thought you had said something different. Two-hundred-and-thirty-second anniversary of the draft... Go on to the next whereas. "Whereas the President and Congress of the United States have designated the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week; and whereas the citizens of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, do enjoy the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties, I, Paige Brown, Mayor of Gallatin, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, as Constitution Week and invite every citizen and institution of Gallatin to join in the national commemoration." And ladies of the DAR and DARs across the country, we really appreciate all that you're doing to keep people educated. And we will get this corrected. So thank you so much for...
And Ms. Love is also a member of our chapter, so we'd like to have her in picture.
Okay. Want to join us? So thank you, ladies. All right. Going on with a few more of mayor's comments. I do want to say a big thank you to those who participated in the trash cleanup a couple of weekends ago, those who attended and organized and sponsored the doggy paddle pool party, those who worked on Grace and Grub, which was the downtown, well, no, it was all of Gallatin, replacement for Taste of Gallatin, certainly those who helped with the Grand Fondo this past weekend, and very importantly, the, all of those who participated, attended, and organized the nine-eleven ceremony, which, again, I was not here for that, but I understand that it was the best one ever and that a beautiful job was done by all. And I appreciate that. That's very important to our community. And the Gallatin Fire Department takes the lead on organizing that, and I think it is a great thing that we do here, and we are committed to doing it for a long, long time. Finally, I do want to mention the Gallatin Fire Department members who participated in the nine-eleven stair climb. Several actually participated in the climb. Others helped set up for it. But here's a comprehensive list of all who did participate. Mr. Rodney Pryor, Mr. Mark Hall, Mr. Clay Swafford, Ben Sprawl, T.J. Sexton, Mark Stevens, Caleb Carter, Houston Anderson, Tyler Rache, Rich Goddard, Jacob Morton, Cody Morgan, Johnny Lamb, Justine Richards, Sean Raymond, Austin Brown, Tony Eisenberg, Greg Pat, Keith Jones, Chad Metters, Adam Cannon, Logan Fetzer, Kyle Warren, Aaron Smith, Tyler Davis, Taylor Sweat, Chris Collins, Josh Wheeler, Blake Hawn, Colton Hawn, Chad Lynn, Jeremiah Hacker, Mark Jenkins, Elizabeth Bignarczyk, Robert Ritchie, Chief Victor Williams, Scott Woodward, and Mr. Brad Anderson. I believe that's Ms. Love's son. So thank you to those men and women who participated in that. Gallatin had great representation, I understand, and we appreciate the Gallatin Fire Department doing that as well. Just a few events that you need to be aware of. The Gallatin Police Department Citizens Police Academy does begin tomorrow night. Also tomorrow night, and I don't know what members of this council have signed up to attend, but the Gallatin City, the, excuse me, the Sumner County Council of Governments is happening tomorrow night at the Bluegrass Country Club from six until eight. The Gallatin Government Institute has had some great sessions already. It continues this Thursday night. And then Third Thursday on Main happens this Thursday with the James Story Band on the square from six, six-thirty until nine P.M. This weekend, you have the cystic fibrosis walk at the Civic Center grounds, the Child Safety Day Fair at Triple Creek Park, Cruze In Again at the Civic Center, the Gallatin Sertoma Truck and Tractor Pull is happening at Triple Creek. And I think that's all we will know for this week, so we can get to... Oh, that's right. Gallatin High School Homecoming is this Friday. So be aware, there is a parade that happens on Friday afternoon, and it does impact traffic. But it's very important to our Gallatin High School students, and we are doing it. I believe it starts at four? Sounds right? All right. With that, I'll conclude mayor's comments and move into the agenda. The first item is second reading on amended ordinance oh-one-nine-zero-eight dash thirty-seven, and Councilman Hayes, you're introduced.
Yeah, thank you. "Ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, approving an amended preliminary master development plan for sixteen forty-five Nashville Pike Freerview Plantation, Phase Nineteen, on two-point-eight-eight acres. Zoned MRO, multiple residential and office, located south of Nashville Pike and west of Plantation Boulevard. Motion to approve."
I have motion by Councilman Hayes. I have a second by Councilwoman Love. I do want to say that there was amendment on this ordinance, and there seemed to be some confusion among those who are watching to fully understand exactly what that provided for. So I would like to make sure that we explain that so that people are clear.
I'll be glad to do that.
Okay. I think you made the amendment if I recall.
Do we need to make it also in this one?
No, no, because we've already passed it on first.
It just says that we approve the road going through the subdivision, but it has to line up with, I think it's called Baxter Avenue. It cannot go through the alley of...
Yeah, and connect to Noah.
Chloe Alley, the alley. I think it's Chloe Alley, whatever it's called, Noah Lane. But it's got to go through Baxter and line up with Baxter Avenue.
Connect. And it's up to them ultimately whether or not they want to do that. Okay, any further discussion on that? All right, this is second reading on amended ordinance oh-one-nine-zero-eight dash thirty-seven. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number two is second reading on ordinance oh-one-eight, I'm sorry, oh-one-nine-zero-eight dash thirty-eight. Again, Councilman Hayes.
"This is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, approving an amended preliminary master development plan for the Villas on the Greens, Phase One and Two, on thirteen point oh-five acres. Zoned MRO, multiple residential and office, located south of Nashville Pike, north of Chloe Lane, and west of Plantation Boulevard. Motion to approve."
Sir.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion or comment on this?
Clarify this, and I think it's the first that took care of it. But I want to be sure that this says that if they put a road through there, it's got to line up with Baxter as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Overton. Any other discussion? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance oh-one-nine-zero-eight dash thirty-eight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Item three is second reading on ordinance oh-one-nine-zero-eight dash thirty-nine. Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is second reading of an ordinance of the city of Gallatin rezoning eight-point-seven-eight plus or minus acres from agriculture residential district to the MRO multiple residential office district with a preliminary master development plan for Tompkins Farm, Phase Two, located east of Old Scottsville Pike and west of Airport Road. Authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning Alice at least repealing conflicting ordinances providing for severity ability and providing for an effective date. And I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance oh-one-nine-zero-eight dash thirty-nine. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously. Item four is second reading on the ordinance oh-one-nine-zero-eight dash forty-two. Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, rezoning two-hundred-five-point-two-seven acres from the agricultural residential district to mixed-use district, one-hundred-and-nine-point-fifty-one acres to the R-eight PRD medium-density residential planned residential development district, eighty-seven-point-three-two acres, and to the CC Court Commercial District, eight-point-four-four acres, with a preliminary master development plan of Thorn Creek at Kennesaw Farms, located east of Big Station Camp Boulevard and north of Nashville Pike and south of the CSX Railroad. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Phan. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
The developer, he came up with some changes, and I guess we need to make this into an amendment.
Okay.
And what they are is, and I'll read these, they were going to do increased buffering on the northern property boundary adjoining the large residential lights. The required buffer material to be installed will be doubled and placed on a berm where there is no existing berm tree line. So that's one thing we're going to do. And then two road extensions are proposed to stub out at the northern adjacent property owner's land. And what they're going to do, they're going to stub them out, I think, about fifty feet short of the property line and continue the buffering. So those are two things that they wanted to kind of amend and put in there. And what that's going to do, that's going to help the adjacent property owners, basically, is what it's going to do.
Okay, so are you going?
And also, they said too, you know, if the roads are extended in the future, those two roads, it will be done by the future developer of the adjacent property.
Okay. Is that your... Are you offering that in the form of an amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Amendment offered by Councilman Hayes?
And Connie, if you need this, I'll pass that around.
Okay. Was that you, Councilman, okay, Councilman Camp? Or Vice Mayor Camp, I'm sorry? Okay, so we have an amendment that we're going to vote on, making those changes. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
I'll just probably ask Mr. Hayes one question. Did that berm, you said, go out to the, where the road stub at, go all the way to that point?
I believe it does.
And why you said, yeah, berm's going. Anyone else? Yeah. We're back on the main motion. All right, you ready to vote on the amendment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, the amendment is passed unanimously, which takes us back to the original motion. And Ms. Love has a question?
This is the one that has, is it fourteen-hundred new residences in it on Kennesaw? And is, does all, is most of that traffic coming or out onto Nashville Pike? And what was, what's the other, is there another street name?
Now, that, remember, they're doing that connector road that connects to Station Camp and...
I don't think any of it.
Something like this.
Okay. It just seems like a lot more, a lot more houses or residences, again, to add to the schools out that way. You know, on Station Camp, it's just really overcrowded. I understand the need for, that meaning residences maybe, but I just, I'm just concerned about traffic and about the school system. And he did tell me that there would be playgrounds or open area, I believe, last time that I asked questions. Is that right? Some, there's pools. Can you come up, please, Mr. Lucky? I just feel like with that many new residences, we need to ask a few questions about it.
Certainly.
Like, you did tell me, I believe, that there were going to be open areas, and how many pools?
Yes, ma'am. It's, we've got three different pools and clubhouse's. Two, the clubhouse's and pools are specific to the product type. And the one other pool and clubhouse will be similar to the one that we have in Kennesaw that serves the entire community.
And did you tell me that there would be a playground or playground equipment at all?
There'll be multiple. Yes, ma'am.
Multiple playgrounds. That's correct.
We've got several pocket parks throughout the entire community, just like what we have in Kennesaw.
Great.
Essentially, every pod or every section that has housing in it has its own small amenity, but they also share the bigger amenities.
And what age do you, are you really trying to attract to move into those?
We're attracting, hopefully, cradle to grave. We'd like to have...
So all ages?
We want, we want, we want to get in front of the kids coming back from school wanting to live in Sumner County and be able to get something affordable all the way up to someone that could, could have a later stage of life residence, a flat or something. And then, you know, if they, they needed to, they could proceed and use the NHC facility as an amenity too.
And I appreciate that you're adding more buffering there, too. That's, that sounds good.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I've got one thing.
Yes, sir.
And I might ask David this, but it's probably more of a buck question than David's question. But have you all had any discussion with Hendersonville about their part of Big Station Camp Creek at all?
Multiple.
What are they going to do anything about?
Mayor Brown might be able to answer the most...
We've had multiple discussions.
We have offered, we have, I don't even know how many discussions we've had, but we've offered to pave that section of road if they'll go ahead and release that piece of property that lays adjacent to it to the city of Gallatin, and we would make that paving through there.
And you don't know where they're at with it. They're not moving it forward, Mayor.
Well, the process that it has to go through is not just they release it to us. It's they, it has to be moved out of their urban growth boundary into ours. It has to go through multiple approvals, including all the councils in the county. And so we've been meeting, trying to get this moving forward. But really, it's, we're making progress. Mr. McCord's actually leading all the planners in the county to get this going, and we're making progress, so.
I might say one more thing. We'll get there.
And the reason I'm asking that is because I, and I don't get into any specific, but I had an email come from their city hall, from somebody there, and they said they were waiting on us. But I know they're not waiting on us to do it, so, I mean, that was just their comment to me.
They may have meant they're waiting on us to get it paved.
We've been discussing, but they've been waiting on us, so.
Well, it does have to go through a process. And like I said, Mr. McCord really has been carrying the water on that for the entire county, and I appreciate his work on that.
Things will be done.
I know. Anyone else?
Have you spoken with the school board about the added number going into Station Camp?
It's my understanding, we've not spoken with them specifically about this project, but it's my understanding that they've taken this whole area into their growth plans based on previous discussions.
Mr. Fenton is indicating that he has something to add. I would welcome him.
Thank you. James Fenton, Economic Development for the city of Gallatin. My office is in, in constant contact with the Board of Education and more specifically, Mr. Del Phillips, with, and letting them know what's coming this direction, the kind of things that we've got going. And they are indeed, and the Liberty Branch School System that's going in there is really taking this into consideration. This has already, already been unfolded into their plans, so this, this really shouldn't be a concern. I mean, it needs to be discussed, and I appreciate you bringing it up. But the fact is that it's been taken into consideration as they look to expanding the school system.
Well, I, I think, I don't mean to interrupt, but I think it's important to acknowledge that the population projections for the corridors along Station Camp, along Greenlee, and honestly, for the county, the county as a whole have been out there for some time. And that, those are the numbers that they work with when they're making plans.
Yeah.
I know it's been ten years that they've been looking at numbers. And we may be exceeding that at this point, but not by law.
We are, we are. Just, but, but as, as the development numbers come in, as the housing numbers come in, as the approved lots and, and, you know, dwelling units come in, again, we relate immediately to the, to the school board, to the director of schools, so that he has a really good understanding of what's coming. And we're, I, I, I'm confident that what they're doing is taking that into consideration.
Mr. McCord, did you have comments to add?
Not really. I would like confirmation on the additional conditions that were added to the ordinance. I'm not sure I understood those completely. Okay, I haven't seen those.
Well, I hope they're not in.
I would like to get a copy.
I hope they're not in conflict with anything that the planning staff would want. Mr. Lucky, certainly.
In layman's terms, the neighbors to the north requested that we add more buffering and not extend the right-of-way road stubs all the way to their property. And this was what we agreed to do with them, and we wanted, wanted it memorialized into the motion. And we should have given Bill the heads up on this. We, we just got information back late today, so.
Thanks for doing it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, this is second reading on ordinance oh one nine zero eight dash forty-two. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Yeah, we voted on the amendment first. Item number five is second reading on ordinance oh one nine zero nine dash forty-four, and there is an amendment to that. Are you aware of that?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Mr. Fennell.
This is an ordinance appropriating funds for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen carryover capital projects. Motion to approve. And I would like to add an amendment.
Motion to approve by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander, and you're going to offer an amendment.
We need to add, the, the fire department grant for the breathing apparatus was left out, so we need to add that. And it's a line item for three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, and expenditure line for six hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
Motion on the amendment by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Overton. Any discussion on that?
We write, Rachel? Okay.
And I will, just to be thoroughly transparent on that, that larger number is actually the number that they had budgeted. And when they applied for the grant, they made that number smaller, and were successful in getting the grant. That's the amount of money that we will be receiving, is the three thirty-one. The amount that remains, part of that is going to be used to purchase some turnout gear that they feel is not safe or not up to stand, not up to standards, I should say, not, not safe.
The what gear, the extraction gear, is that what you're?
No, 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 turnout gear. Turnout gear that is not up to standards, and so they're going to be using a portion of that remaining funds for that. And then, there is a designation for the remainder of about two hundred thousand dollars. But I just want to make sure that you all were aware of that. So, did we vote on the amendment, folks?
We haven't.
Okay. All in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Back to the original motion. Any discussion? All right, this is second reading on oh one nine zero nine dash forty-four. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item six is first reading on ordinance oh one nine zero nine dash forty-five. Councilman Fan.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance appropriating insurance recoveries in the amount of seven thousand, three hundred and five dollars, forty-three cents from the unassigned fund balance of the general fund for repair of damages to public works equipment. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? All right, first reading on ordinance oh one nine zero nine dash forty-five. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item seven is first reading on ordinance oh one nine zero nine dash forty-seven. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance appropriating twenty-five hundred dollars from Tennessee Valley Authority to the Gallatin Economic Development Agency, and I so move.
Motion, motion by Councilman Overton, second by Vice Mayor Camp. Any discussion? All right, this is first reading on ordinance oh one nine zero nine dash forty-seven. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item eight is first reading on ordinance oh one nine zero nine dash forty-nine. Councilman Hayes.
This is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, approving a preliminary master development plan for Dollar General on one point seven one acres, located north of State Route three eighty-six and east of Greenlee Boulevard. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Overton. Open for discussion.
You know, Bill, can I ask you a few questions about this? Because we really debated this issue in planning and was concerned that, that we wanted a product on Greenlee that was going to mimic Hendersonville's standards, if not better. And we asked him for a rendering. Is this the rendering of what we're supposed to get?
Yes, sir, this is the latest one that was provided to us by the consultant.
And it doesn't look like Hendersonville though, does it?
Well, it doesn't have the pitched roof.
Yeah.
Other, Hendersonville one has a pitched roof, a metal pitched roof. I think it's green. And so this one does look similar to buildings that are located on the other side of the interchange that they're under construction right now. So, and of course, it exceeds the brick requirement of our code. It's, this one appears to be a hundred percent brick, pretty much, so.
Is it a hundred percent brick?
It appears to be.
What's, what's on the left and right side there?
The very parapet portion doesn't appear to be brick, but other, you know, other than that.
What's the problem with the pitched roof, I guess?
It's not required by our architectural provisions in our zoning code.
We could require it though, right?
And I thought we specifically asked for pictures of the Hendersonville style last week.
I mean, I grew up either today, again, you know, I've been by there a hundred times, but I'm just saying, you know, it's just.
We need to get this right. And Bill, we also discussed the connectivity roads between the workforce essentials and, and Dollar General. And we agreed upon that, correct? We had some problems, some issue with balancing of the land.
There'll be an interconnected driveway between the workforce site and the Dollar General site. As far as the architecture goes, the workforce site has kind of a angled roof. So it would not match the roof sizing that you have for the Hendersonville store. And that, by the way, that picture's going around. The computer's not working. Lori told me the computer's not working. So that's a photograph for the Hendersonville store there. And the applicant's representative here is tonight to be able to express to you the changes that they've made and describe in more detail the architecture that's before you and the photograph that's before you.
So in your opinion, the, the, the flat roof, as far as the character of the other buildings in the area, is more appropriate?
Well, that's what you're going to get across the freeway interchange there, where they're building the restaurant and some other businesses.
It's just a different designed building, is basically what it is. I think this one looks better, but.
So, yeah, they do have that pitched roof, pitch metal roof there on that one.
Looks a whole lot better.
Almost like a Coppola on the corner.
Is this your fault, Bill?
The square foot is the same on the building. Anybody know? The square foot is the same on the building.
Square foot, I think it's ninety-one hundred.
Don't come up to Hendersonville.
Oh, I don't have that information.
Hendersonville looks like it goes deeper in the law, I think. Not much front on it.
I might be expecting one to add something, don't you, Mr. Fenton? Do you want to add something? Thank you.
I encourage within the regulations that are set out for this body to, to please, to push this design as far forward as possible. That area of, of the city, the Greenlee area, has the opportunity for us to, and had been targeted by my office and developers, as a Class A office space, as the ability for us to truly bring in some employment and development that, that we are looking for, that has been put into the city's strategic plan. And if this is to move forward, I just encourage it to make sure that it is aesthetically comparable to what we're looking for as, as a community. I think right now, the, the basic building does not fit in with what we're trying to accomplish. I have not been shown what's there at this point in time. The, the, the American Job Center does have angular, it is progressive, it is moving us forward as a community. And I think, I just encourage you guys to make sure that, that what's out there fits in with what you, as a body, has, has requested of this office. And, and what we do is, we start moving forward.
So you, you believe that the one with the pitched roof will fit in more with what's planned there?
No, I'm, I'm not saying that. I, I haven't seen, I haven't seen the.
He's saying if we're going to let Dollar General go there, it would look very, very good.
We need, in plan, we didn't, we didn't have this available at the time, did we?
Exactly, so I'm, I'm.
So, I mean, why don't we go back?
Asking you to put it off and let us go back and look at it and make sure that what they bring forward is appropriate.
I'd, I'd rather push it back through planning right there and let all, all the planning people see this thing. Make sure it's what we.
And I'm, I'm requesting that, thank you.
And my thing is, and if y'all want to, I don't mind going ahead with first reading. And we can push it back to planning and then go to second reading. Before second reading, we'll have something ironed out. Y'all want to do that?
That's fine with me.
Well, we'll plan.
Don't approve something that's not appropriate, please.
Will the, will planning see and consider the one like in, that Hendersonville's got?
Yes, we brought it up, Linda.
Okay, so we have a motion for, motion, a second for pass first reading. I think you could pass first reading, but I think you need a separate motion to move it back to Planning Commission for consideration.
Okay. Well, let's get, let's vote on them.
Everybody ready to vote on the first reading? Okay, it's first reading on the ordinance oh one nine zero nine dash forty-nine. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. If someone want to make another motion?
I'll make a motion that we send this back to planning to review. Yeah.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. We'll go back to planning before it comes back to this body for a second reading. Item number nine is resolution R one nine zero nine dash fifty-one, and Councilman Hayes.
See, this is a resolution accepting public improvements by the city of Gallatin, Tennessee. Renwood, section three, motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, the second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is resolution R one nine zero nine dash fifty-one. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda and brings us now to other business. Does anyone on this council have other items to bring forward? Okay, I have one thing, and this is for a road closure. It's related to the cemetery tour. It is for the date of October fifth, twenty nineteen, which is a Saturday. And they'd like to close Cemetery Avenue from Smith Street to West Winchester from three P.M. until eleven P.M. And this, of course, is a fundraiser for the Sumner County Museum. Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It is approved unanimously. Thank you. So, Mr. Fenton?
Thank you, Mayor. And you have before you the, the minutes from our Board of Directors meeting. But I also want you to realize that in there are the meeting minutes from the meeting we have with the Economic Development Agency and the Industrial Development Board. And out of those, out of that meeting came several initiatives that paralleled quite closely to what you folks talked about last night. The, the, the chair of our board will be in front of you, I think, in November to kind of explain that. But I just wanted to say I'm, I'm excited that, that what you folks looked at last night, what you folks talked about, and what you folks kind of began to drive forward really do parallel what a joint meeting between our board and the Industrial Development Board started to create for this city. And, and I think it's exciting in that all of these agencies that are, are driving this community forward are starting to align. So I appreciate the efforts. I appreciate your time last night. And I ask that you go ahead and look through those. And if there are any questions about what's in here, please give us contact. But thank you so much for your time last night.
Thank you. For those of you who may wonder what that comment's related to, there was a joint meeting last night between the Planning Commission and the Gallatin City Council to work on the long-range plan for the city of Gallatin. And it was a very productive meeting, and we did some exercises, much like we're going to be having the public do exercises in the coming months. So it was a good meeting, and we're excited about moving forward with that. Anyone else have anything? I do want to mention just one fun thing I heard today. I talked to Kim Baker with the Gallatin Chamber, and they're working on their very first Leadership Gallatin class, and they have a lot of applicants. They're going to be able to take less than half of their applicants, so that's exciting. All right, we'll move now to public comment on non-agenda-related items. You can come forward at this time if you have an item that's not on this evening's agenda that you would like to address. Introduce yourself, give us your address, and you'll have five minutes.
Hi, Michelle Juvance, thirteen thirty-five Long Hollow Pike. And I have something that's not on the agenda, but first of all, I wanted to tell you all thank you very much for your discussion this evening on the Dollar General store. And, because that's my neighborhood, and we want something super cool. Like I said, at Planning Commission, something really cool for our neighborhood. So I really appreciate your discussion on that tonight. So I'm, I'm here right now because I had a phone call from a neighbor today. And she asked me a question, and I didn't know specifically the answer, and I told her I would ask tonight here. So she, she was not happy. She called and she said that she heard that there were Section Eight apartments going in on Long Hollow Pike. And so I, you know, after talking to her and finding out what she was talking about, she was talking about the trails at Hunter Point. So that's been a couple of years since that was approved. So I don't know if you remember exactly what that is, but I looked it up, and it's the, the commercial development on the corner of Long Hollow Pike and three eighty-six. So apparently, it was a commercial development, and then two years ago, it came back through, and they were, developer was asking for a change of use to make it into apartment buildings. And then you all approved two hundred and sixteen apartments. So I have a couple of questions about that. So I have a couple of questions about that specific, um, development. So I, I, when I looked up, it, it was approved on, two years ago, actually it was on September nineteenth of two thousand seventeen. And, um, the, on the second reading, it says Mayor Brown said she has great concerns about this. She said she has heard from a lot of people about this. She believes this is a bad place and a bad change to the master development plan. This will negatively impact that area with traffic, and this increases our housing by thirty percent. She said this is an opportunity to not contribute to that. Mayor called for the vote. Motion carried with six ayes, and Councilwoman Love voted nay. So at that time, um, all of you are here except for Councilman Fan because Mr. Mayberry was still on the council at that time, so Ms. Love was the only one who actually voted no on those apartment buildings. Um, so my, my neighbor was asking me about that. She, she was told it was Section Eight, so I don't know. I told her I would ask about that and find out for her, and, um, I think this was the first that she knew that there were apartment buildings going right there. So I want to know for myself why you all decided to, um, approve that change of use from commercial to apartments on that corner, um, 'cause that is, again, my neighborhood, and it's directly across from Fairway Farms, which is an upscale subdivision, and it doesn't make any sense to have apartment buildings right there. Um, how much time do I have left?
A minute and forty seconds.
Okay, so I actually have a really interesting story about that exact apartment complex. I have a friend, um, who moved here from out of state, and I want to tell you about this because I'm concerned that Gallatin is at risk of losing a certain demographic of residents, and that would be retired people who move here, who can live wherever they want to, and they choose Gallatin, and they move here, they have time, they have money. Um, and my friend Carol moved here from Texas and built her dream house in Fairway Farms. And her and her husband purchased a lot that was a little bit bigger and had some evergreen trees, and they paid extra money for that lot because it was a little bit bigger and had evergreen trees in the back. And she recently moved back to Texas because those apartment buildings were approved there. She told me this last year. Um, I asked her if she liked her house, and she said, "I love my house. I just wish I could pick it up and move it." Her husband told me, "If I had known those apartment buildings would be approved, we would have never built our house there. We made a mistake." And two months ago, they moved back to Texas. These are people, I know her because we volunteered together. She's a master gardener, and we volunteered at Craig, at Craig Font in the gardens. These are the kind of people that we don't want to lose. We don't want to lose people who move here, who have time to volunteer their time, who have the money and the opportunity to live anywhere they want to, and they picked Gallatin on purpose, and then something like this is approved, and my time is up. But that was my point. I think that if, please pay as much attention to everything as you do, just the way you did with the, um, with the Dollar General. We, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pascal Juvance, Long Hollow Pike, Gallatin. Madam Mayor, esteemed council members. You see, I learned from you, Madam Mayor. First thing, I, I can't believe I'm gonna say that, but, uh, I have to agree with my good friend James about what he just said. Um, that was a great speech. We agree on something, you see? Second staff, um, if you guys can put a motion on the next council to, uh, try to give some money to my wife because she spends much time getting phone calls from neighbors. So instead of calling you, they call her. That take on my time, and she should get money for that or something. So maybe she'll do something. Uh, third thing, I was kind of surprised. Um, I still don't know how everything worked, but of what I heard earlier where an amendment went through the council without planning, knowing about it. Bill had no clue that was coming on, and, and I found that surprising, but that was my, my way of thinking. Come back to Liberty Creek. Liberty Creek, I don't know if you guys have drive by recently, but, um, this place is a mess. And we pulled out the, uh, master development, um, plan on that place, and, um, there was a, supposed to be a buffer on the right side, and every time I drive there, all I see is basically these people just cut right straight at the tree line on the right side, and, I don't know how we can let that go because they cut at the tree line. They basically digged a wall right at the tree line, so I don't know how they're gonna be able to put a buffer there. And the second thing, these trees are gonna die. These trees are dead. In few years, uh, they basically cut at the roots, directly at the roots of the trees. So that's, that's not good. I don't know how, how that gone done or what control was made on that, but you guys should look into that because, um, just go drive and look, look what's happening back there. Bill, it's your turn again. Yeah, whoa, whoa, I'll talk to Bill after, but, um, I think you guys should keep an eye on that. I'm gonna cut short, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Juvance. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? All right, seeing no one else indicating that they wish to speak, I will declare public recognition on non-agenda-related items closed. And with that, I'd welcome one more motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Love. All in favor, say aye. Ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned. Have a lovely evening. Thank you for being with us tonight.